Thank you, everyone. We'll go ahead and get underway. Before we call the meeting to order, we have some special young people in our audience that we'd like to recognize this morning. We have our leadership council here. Through the Community Anti-Drug Coalition, Little is here, along with Lindsey Carr, who heads up these young people who are members of a youth advisory council. They have just been selected by councilors, by and large, most of the councilors in all of our high schools. I think all of our high schools are represented. If they're back there in the Baptist pew, how about y'all standing up? Y'all standing up. Let's acknowledge them, thank them for what they do. Good job. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for being here this morning. We'll call the March 7, 2017 meeting of Jackson City Council to order, and we'll call on Councilman Harvey Buchanan for invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
Good morning. Let us pray. This morning, God, our heavenly Father, the maker and creator of all things, the sustainer of the world, our rock and our savior. We come to you this morning, Father, petitioning our throne of grace. First of all, thanking you for waking us up this morning to see a brand-new day. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have so richly bestowed upon us, and we pray and ask for your continued blessings and for you to keep us in your keeping. Forgive us, Father, of our many sins and trespasses that we have done. Father, we ask and pray that you will continue to comfort Councilman Cisco and his family.
Yes.
Strengthen them where they're weak, build them up where they've been torn down, and make their share and enjoy the memories of Sister Sandra Cisco. He is our colleague, and we stand beside him and with him 100 percent. And, Father, during this council meeting, we ask that you anoint it, bless it, lead us, guide us, and direct us, facilitate us in the way that you would have us to go. Some want one thing, some want another, but, Father, you know what is best for the entire city of Jackson. Go with us, Father, and don't leave us. This is our prayer in the marvelous, magnificent name of Jesus. Amen, and thank God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, my lord. We have one proclamation this morning, and that is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we'll ask Sherri Cole, if she's here, to come down, and I'll read that proclamation and make it a part of this meeting. Sherri, you here? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read it down at the podium, and we'll get it to the Child Abuse Center. This is the proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month. We need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes life's path for nearly 4 million of our nation's children annually. Whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportion in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socio-economic, or geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from falling the road to a successful future. And whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes, and whereas the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse is participating in national child abuse prevention efforts through their awareness campaign with the Alice in Wonderland theme, we're all mad here about child abuse. Now therefore, we, Jerry, guess Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of County of Madison, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens to observe this time to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem as the center helps to strengthen families and prevent abuse. We now further commend the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse for its contingent's success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full public support for their successful efforts. Proclamation signed by myself and Mayor Harris. Councilman Wallace, I'm gonna give this to you since you're in the Exchange Club, and if you'll present this to me.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Good evening. I think you can show everyone present. I have three, but we'll call. Item four is approval of the minutes of February 7, 2017, city council meeting. Council members received a copy of those minutes. If there are any additions or corrections, we'll take those at this time. If not, we'll just accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation to public comment. If there's anyone present who would like to be heard on any item under new business, and once we get to that particular item, if you'd let me know, I'll be happy to call. Recognizations, we have none. First readings, we have none. Second readings, item nine, consideration of ordinance for rezoned property located at 1694 Hollywood Drive, RG 12, general residential. Yes, okay. Just stop right there. Calling on Tony Black to introduce and notice some interns with us.
I'd like to introduce to you all, I have three interns that are gonna be working in my department, and two students from Lane, Derry, Class, and present today is an intern, is Casey Lindberg. She's a senior at Union, and she's majoring in sports management, and she's from Clarkson, Tennessee. And what we oftentimes get, most of our interns have come from UT Martin, so we're very thankful to now have some local students who want to understand what recreational parks are all about. So she's gonna be with us, and the other ones are gonna be with us for a couple of months. I'll take them around to all our facilities, and I'll be bringing them around, introducing them to you all, so that you all can meet them and see them. This is Ms. Casey Lindberg. She's a golfer, too.
Welcome. Thanks, and welcome. Hope you have a good summer following the meeting. Okay, we'll go back to item nine. Thank you, Tony, for reminding me of that. Consideration of ordinance for rezoned property located at 1694 Hollywood Drive, RG 12, general residential 12, light industrial districts, who are office residential district containing 2.86 acres, more or less submitted to Garrett Plumbing and Heating. Council approved this ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Has a motion.
Second.
Second. A discussion, second reading. Council, please vote.
And the vote passes eight in favor, one abstaining.
Okay, item 10, under new business, approval of resolution approving the modification of interlocal agreement of April 18, 2005. Al, if you would handle that.
Morning, Mayor, council.
Morning.
Good morning.
You should have before you a resolution that would be approving the modification of the interlocal agreement of April 18, 2005, as the mayor just stipulated. And just to give you a little background of what we're talking about here, back in 2005, when the Sportsplex was first conceived and started construction, the city and county got together, and probably one of the most successful things that we've done together, and this interlocal agreement, amongst other things, and this is what we're talking about today, item number five addressed the hotel and motel tax. And as you can see there, they did a study, and the five-year average preceding 2005, the tax in total averaged out to 975,000. So as a means of getting the Sportsplex off the ground, plus recognizing the fact that the county Dixie Youth and Little League plays on those fields, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday nights in May and April, June, so they probably play, as far as usage on the fields, 25% to 30% of the time. So in recognition of those factors, the city, county, and CEDC got together and said that anything over $975,000, that was the cap, would then, for the next 10 years, ending December 31, 2016, which has just ended, would go to the Sportsplex. And it turned out to be, quite honestly, a tremendous growth, that I don't know if anyone anticipated. You have probably a sheet in front of you, but I modified it and brought it up to date a little bit further. You can see, we started out, the first year, the tax that the Sportsplex got over and above that cap was 311,000. The end of the 10th year, year 10, it had grown to 803,000. So from an average of 975 to a year ending the 10th year, 1.778, our hotel and motel tax almost doubled, which means that the hotels and motels and restaurants and et cetera benefited accordingly. The Sportsplex obviously was not the only factor in that, but it did play a partial role. So the county, under the leadership of, we have a committee called the Sportsplex Oversight Committee, which John Newman chairs, and he has done a great job. They have come up with an agreement that modifies the 975 cap, which obviously wouldn't be prevalent to go on from this point, and have basically said that effective January 1, 2017, the CEDC gets their 20% right off the top. They're not involved in this agreement. But then the balance, the 80%, after it reaches a cap of 1,820, then the Sportsplex would get anything over and above that, which going back to the chart that I had up there, if it continues to grow at a 3% rate, and I don't think they would be building new hotels if those owners and those developers didn't think it was gonna grow, the Sportsplex would probably end up around 245,000, first year 289 through 34, which we would be very, very happy to receive. And let me explain why. The Sportsplex debt, unlike the general fund debt, the Sportsplex debt is going down. And, let's get on this a little. You can see that this year, the first year, which we're in right now, 2017, the total debt, annual debt service is 727,000. But we've already got that covered by the 803,000 that came in on hotel motel tax, which is by the interlocal agreement dedicated to debt. But next year is our problem, child, because it's the last year of the $6 million that we borrowed from Bancorp South, and of course, the hotel motel tax goes away unless the county and you approve it, and the county already has, then we would be getting a contribution towards that 717,000. But then you can see after that, it falls down to 324, 374, excuse me, 372. So it's almost cut in half, and we have other dedicated sources of income that will go towards getting us through 2018. But 2018 would probably be our roughest year, and we benefit from having paid off the $6 million that we borrowed from Bancorp South over 12 years, and we still are a part of the 2009 refunding, along with City Hall and all the other things that were in that, so that that continues on through 2024. But it is obviously to our benefit to accept the agreement, in my opinion, that has been put forth by the county, and I really thank John Newman for his leadership role in getting this cooperation. Because like I said, at the county commission meeting, there wasn't even one question asked. I think it's one of the few times the city and county agreed upon the success of a project.
I have to approve.
Second.
Have a motion for approval. Second, a discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The next resolution is a resolution to revise the debt management policy that we have and that we are required to have by the State Comptroller's Office. And there's two areas we want to revise. And the first area is, we had a cap on variable rate at 20% of our total borrowings, and that was back in the time 2008, in that area, where things were very uncertain, and we kept on that. If we were to be borrowing money today, and we're not, let me just give you an example of why we don't want to hedge ourselves in there and have any kind of a percent. But this is, the SIFMA rate is what the variable rate is based on. And you can see what happened after 2008, when we had our recession, the SIFMA rate dropped to below than 1%. So for the last five-year average, the SIFMA rate was .16%. It's now up to .65. But even if you take that, and this is what we are currently paying, .65% for the SIFMA rate, the bank charge, which in this case is First Tennessee, who has our loans, is .75%, and then the municipal bond fund gets .15. So we're paying 1.55% on the last two loans that we did, which were 15.3 million and 17.4. So I think, and the Budget Committee agreed, that we need to leave ourselves some wiggle room. We shouldn't cap anything. We should make decisions at the time as to what's best for the city. Of course, nobody has a crystal ball as to see where these rates are going, but if you look at where we're at, at 1.54, 1.55, and you compare that to our six fixed-rate bonds that we have that are averaging 3.71%, you can see that the variable-rate loans are less than 50% of the fixed rate. And that could change, obviously. Nobody knows what's gonna be happening in the future. But the proposal that the Budget Committee agreed to was that we not cap ourselves with a percent of variable loans. Some cities, like Murphysboro, are almost entirely variable-rate. So that's the first portion. The second portion is that our total debt, annual debt service, which right now is 8.5, compared to the total property tax, we're right now at 22.5%. And back in 2011, I guess it was, Frank Newdecker and myself were charged with coming up with the debt service policy that would limit, and there's many ways to measure how much you go outstanding on your loans, but this was one, and we established 23% as the cap. And you can see that we're gonna grow to 25% without doing anything else. It goes up 1,101,000, the annual debt service, from 8.5 to 9.6. That goes to 25,200. Then that debt service stays the same for another year at 9.6, and we're at 24,700. But then in FY '20, it goes up another 700,000, and we're at 25,800. So our proposal was to limit that now to 26%. And just to show you what is happening, sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. On pie chart basis, in FY '16, 20.39% of every tax dollar we took in went to debt service. And in FY '17, 22.49% is going to debt service. And what that means is, there's less money in the general fund going to public safety, parks and recreation, everything else. And as that continues to decline, even if we have a growth in tax rate, which last year, tax rate revenue, not tax rate, excuse me, in tax rate revenue, which last year was about 2.7%, that really diminished because it's being taken away by debt service. So that's the two proposals that we have. One is to take away any cap on variable-rate loan, and the second one is to say that the percentage would be increased from 23% to 26% as far as annual debt service to total property tax revenue. Any questions?
Al, on that raising it 26%, is that in keeping maybe with other cities our size? How are we doing now?
Well...
How does it compare?
I couldn't find any other city that was actually doing this kind of a performance rate. Most of them, like when we were rated by Standard and Poor's, and we were up to a double-A, they look at total debt as a percent of your total budget. You know, there's many different ways of looking at it. And I would say right now, at this, if you convert that back to the way Standard and Poor's looks at it, we're right at the top, unfortunately, of where we should be.
Al, is this a self-imposed percentage?
Yes.
Yep.
Not mandated by Comptroller, not mandated by...
This is just a guideline for...
This is something we're doing to ourselves.
The requirement is that we have a policy.
Right. I move the approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Second.
And we have a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote passes with all members in favor, except one is out at this time.
Okay, thank you, Al. There's no objection. Council will look at number five, under new business, approval of resolution supporting Governor's improved act. If there's no objection from council, I'd like to simply delay that. That particular piece of legislation is, I think it's something that, obviously, we're all interested in, certainly wants to see our transportation improved throughout the state, because it's all about economic development. You're not gonna have economic development without a good transportation plan. This particular piece of legislation, though, is a moving target. It's first committee appearance. It was amended quite strongly. Not for sure they know exactly what those amendments are, so they're still working on it. I hesitate to approve a piece of legislation that has not been finalized at this point, so we'll know exactly what we're approving the resolution for. Initial legislation was obviously a tax on gasoline, tax on diesel fuel, and to offset that by some elimination of the hall income tax and reduction of sales taxes on food. And we've estimated, within the city, just the numbers that we've gotten on what the current legislation would be, or as it was proposed by the governor, that within about five years of being enacted, that the city of Jackson would be pretty much revenue-neutral. In other words, we would lose about as much money with the reduction of the hall income tax, reduction of sales tax on food, that we're getting from the gasoline and diesel tax. So just based upon the fact that it's still going through amendments, if there's no objection, we'll wait till they get a little bit closer to tying that piece of legislation down to where we can either voice our support or objection to it at that time. So there's no objection, we'll go ahead and pull that. Item three is the approval of resolution authorizing One Jackson Action Committee proceed with a study of implementing a stormwater utility fee, and that resolution was brought to council by the Budget Committee, so I'll turn it over to Councilman Wallace, who chairs that particular committee.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, the city over the last several years has been spending more money than we've been taking in, so this committee was appointed to try to see what our options were, to try to stop that process, to spend more money than we're taking in. And that's what the committee's trying to do. And in the process of doing that, we were charged with looking at three areas, I guess, looking at our debt service, which we talked about a little bit, also looking at revenues, and, you know, where we could look at possibly increasing our revenues, and then looking at expenditures, where we possibly could decrease our expenditures. And one of the expenditures that we noted in the process of reviewing this was the stormwater, the cost for managing the stormwater problem that the city has currently. Our infrastructure is aged more as it gets older, more of it's starting to have problems with it. We have culverts that are collapsing, streets that we're having problems with, and just the stormwater in general. As the city grows, it provides more, or creates more stormwater running into the ditches, and that's created a problem, too. And last year, I'm sorry, this year, we're anticipating we're gonna spend about $1.5 million on stormwater, and this is an increase in expense as we go along each year. So the committee was looking at, you know, that's a particular expense, and how we could fund that particular expense. And a lot of cities across the state have a stormwater fee that they use to cover that expense. So the committee was looking at possibly doing a stormwater fee, rather than just come forward and say, we wanted to do a fee. We were looking at the possibility of having the One Jackson Committee, which actually brought this to the attention of the city, to be the committee to look at, doing some research on that, and finding out whether the city wanted to go forward with it or not. In the process, we met with an individual from Kimberly-Horn about doing a feasibility study for how we would charge that stormwater fee to the commercial and residential people in the city. What they would do was, they would look at how much infrastructure there is out there that's causing the stormwater to be running off. In other words, you know, build a building, you've got a roof on the building, and the roof causes stormwater runoff, parking lots cause stormwater runoff, and a variety of things like that. And they were looking at how the best way that would be the most appropriate to charge for stormwater expenditures. And they put a proposal together for us, which came back a little bit more than I was thinking it would be, is what that cost would be. And so in the resolution that we're putting forward, I am recommending that we not approve paying for that study. Alls I'd like for us to do is to approve the One Jackson Committee to go forward with studying the stormwater problem, studying the possibility of instigating a fee to cover the stormwater problem, maybe meeting with Kimberly-Horn and see if they could get this reduced, or possibly even the city staff doing that study as opposed to Kimberly-Horn. But before we approve a feasibility study, we're paying an outside firm to do that study. I'd want that to come back forward to council for us to prove that, to make sure that we want to go forward with that. So that's the run of the resolution, I think.
Mayor, any questions from council?
Councilman Wallace, actually, this is basically talking about adding another tax, right?
Correct.
That's what it boils down to, right?
Right. It'd be commercial, the thoughts were that it would be a commercial fee and a residential fee, it'd be added to the utility bill, similar to the garbage fees.
Lord, I don't need nothing else, add my utility bill. But this is proposed, which would be taxed to everybody, then, what you're saying, through the utility...
It depends on what the committee came forward with, whether they may come forward and say, you know, commercial-only, we'd pay the fee.
I don't think we need to be...
That's what we...
I think we can find the money somewhere else. I don't think we need to be adding any more taxes.
This proposal's not to add the taxes. This proposal asks our One Jackson Committee, that's proposed, to look at it. And so we need to look at ways to redo that. This is one piece of a bigger puzzle. Hold on, we let you talk. Hold on a second.
Don't tell me what to do.
Just hold on a second. This is one piece of a bigger puzzle.
So we're not voting on a tax today at all? We're voting on a study to decide...
With no additional expenditures to the city for the time being.
And what is the cost of the study? I know you said the city staff might do it, but if we don't, do we know what that's gonna cost?
The cost of what I'm making, proposing this resolution, there would be no cost to the city. That committee's already been formed. It's made up of individuals, residents in the city, as well as city officials.
So the committee sort of will do the study?
Ma'am.
The committee will do...
We're asking the committee to study this further to see what...
I know you said the city staff might do it, but if we don't, do we know what that's going to cost?
The cost of what I'm making, proposing this resolution, there would be no cost to the city. That committee has already been formed. It's made up of individuals, residents in the city, as well as city officials.
So the committee sort of will do the study?
Ma'am.
The committee will...
We're asking the committee to study this further to see whether they want to recommend to go forward with it or not.
Mayor, if I may, granted, just to be clear, there is a possibility that we would hire an outside firm, but right now, we're not proceeding in retaining Kimley Firm, Kimley Horn, I'm sorry. Right now, we're only proceeding with forming the committee, which is already formed, as you said, but proceeding with their study.
That's correct.
That ought to give us a good look at where things really are at the completion of this study, shouldn't it?
Yes.
And they'll recommend whether or not we need to retain someone.
Yes.
And we'll make that decision at that time.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. I move the approval.
Will there be any residents on that committee? Is it just...
Yes, the committee, there's about fifteen people on the committee.
Okay, let's get a second. We'll go ahead and discuss. We have a second now then, discussion. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, that's the one Jackson committee that was formed about a year ago to look at, you know, the variety of different things the city needs to grow forward.
Yeah, I'm on that committee as well, but I didn't know if we were going to seek others that might have expertise for this particular...
Conceivably. That would be up to the committee to decide whether they wanted to bring other people on.
About fourteen people on that committee. They've been in existence ever since the master plan has been presented to council. And how often they meet, Stan? You meet with them about once monthly? Okay. Any other, we have a motion, and a second. We have a discussion on the resolution. If not, council please vote.
The motion passes six to three.
Okay, item four is approval resolution for substantial amendments to the annual action plan, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Good morning.
The resolution before you is for approval of amendments to the community developments' annual action plans, two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and fifteen, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars in home funds to the tenant-based rental assistance homeless demonstration program. And we were going to work with West Tennessee Healthcare to move homeless persons that were in the hospital that could not be discharged because they had nowhere to go into transitional housing, which West Tennessee Healthcare was going to operate, and then move them from there to permanent housing, which we would provide the rental assistance. However, currently, the hospitals at West Tennessee Healthcare has not been able to secure the funding needed to operate and staff the transitional housing. So we have to look at moving these funds so that we won't lose them. Per HUD regulations, we have two years to commit the funds from the time of allocation. So we have to have them committed to a project by June thirtieth. So what we want to do is move that twenty thousand dollars to our community housing development organizations, Jona Affordable Housing and Southwest CDC for their housing acquisition and repair programs, so that we can get it committed before the deadline. For the two thousand and sixteen, we have, we committed twenty thousand dollars in community development block grant funds to our public service agency, Operation Hope, and we funded there for several years. However, this year, in December, actually, they decided to not accept the funding. They said that they were moving in a different direction, and they were receiving mostly donations and everything, and that...
Excuse me, who was that?
Operation Hope. Their after-school and summer youth program. So we have to look at getting those funds budgeted elsewhere so that we won't lose that twenty thousand dollars. So what we want to do is move that twenty thousand to our minor housing rehabilitation program, because right now, we only have about fifteen thousand dollars left for the rest of the year, which would only do about three homes. So if we add that twenty thousand, we can get a few more homes done, because we have, like, over fifty people on the waiting list for that program.
How many do you have waiting?
Over fifty, yeah, and only fifteen thousand dollars. Any questions?
How would that affect the summer program?
Well, he's, basically, my understanding is for his programs that he doesn't need the money at this point.
Who is that?
Operation Hope.
Okay.
Yeah. He said that they're running mostly off of donations, and our CDG funds is really only grant funding that they receive, and that they don't have the staff or the time to commit to doing the necessary requirements for the program.
Who runs that program?
Bruce Hussey.
What is the status of your, I see, I know you have fifty waiting, but what is the status of your housing program? I know you have White Hall and Dupree, there's six, but what do you have going on?
As far as our funding with the CDG and home, yeah, we have, like, under the home program, you know, that's a substantial rehab. We have a couple going there, where we're going in and doing substantial, up to twenty-five thousand dollars rehab on those homes. And that program is hard because a lot of people don't want the lien that we have to place on the home, you know?
You have Gate Streets also, right?
Yes.
Is that yours?
Are we doing a project over there? No, no.
Like Southwest?
Maybe, it's not us.
Southwest, White Hall, it's going, yeah.
But we don't, we had a project over there a couple of years ago, but we don't currently have one over there.
The funding that we're sending down to Southwest, is there anything which would necessitate them spending at least a likewise amount of money in Madison, in Jackson?
Say that again.
The money that we're sending down to Southwest through this plan, if we approve it, is there any stipulation which indicates that they will spend exactly that, at least that much money in Jackson?
Yeah.
Because they have nine other counties that they...
Right, they have to spend it in the city.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions?
One other question. On the twenty thousand, we're moving into the Cho-Cho-Do, is how you call it, Cho-Do plan? Would that money be better spent, or could we move that over into minor emergency repairs since we're so far behind?
Well, because that's, the home funds and the CDG funds is two separate programs.
So the answer would be no.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was speaking about, the home funds, the substantial rehab. We do have money there, and we can spend up to twenty-five thousand. So, like I said, that's a hard sell because of the ten-year lien that we have to put on the property to secure the affordability period that HUD requires.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fason, our funds are getting lower and lower from federal government, isn't it?
Yes, they are.
You say a million point four.
Right.
Only what, seven hundred thousand now?
Oh, right, that's about how much we have.
Including CGB.
Right, CDG and home, we have about seven hundred.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council?
Will we approve the resolution?
We have a motion and a second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, under board appointments, item six on the new business under the Med, the quarter, West Tennessee Cultural Arts Center, we have Bill LeFond, new appointee, Linda S. Wood, Carla Brungesser, Jerry Gay, and Jerry Woods' reappointments. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Under Keep Jackson Beautiful, Mayor Joe Bell.
Move the approval.
Second.
A discussion, council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Under the Housing Appeals Board, Bart Roth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Under the Health, Education, and Housing Board, the appointment of Kathy Clayton.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Mayor's Advisory Council on Domestic and Sexual Violence, the appointment of Leah Naylor, Jody Pickens, Mary Cole, Scott Conker, Brian Carrier, David Caruthers, and Nicole Ellis.
So moved.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is, it passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Nine. Oh, you abstained.
One abstained, yes, sir.
I forgot my flicker.
Okay, you've got a lot of things, but never a flicker. Okay, under budget amendments, Ms. Bell.
Good morning. The budget amendment that you have in front today is basically a cleanup-type budget amendment. You may remember that the general fund is no longer allowed to directly pull funds from the solid waste. So under the direction of comptroller, we now are direct costing, and the process took place July one, but the budget funds were not moved. So this budget amendment allows the funds to be moved into the solid waste fund from the general fund, and also causes a decrease on the fund balance to the general fund.
So moved.
Motion, second.
Second.
A second, discussion. Council, please vote. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Ms. Chairman, I will be a big...
Wait, let's get the vote. Nada?
Would everybody please vote again, please? And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I forgot my special guest has come in to observe the mayor and the council today, the great-grandson of Councilman James Buchanan, Christopher James Buchanan Love. He's majoring in political science at University of Tennessee at Martin, and he's come to observe the mayor and council, everybody except his granddaddy, because I don't want to give him bad habits. Will you stand, son?
Good to see you. It's nice to be here. Hopefully, this has been a learning experience for you, sir. Item seven, is invoices over ten thousand dollars?
So moved.
At the motion?
Second.
Second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is, Councilman Brooks is voting, and the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, being as chairman.